I'd like to call the meeting to order.
Recording.
I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phyllis, if we could have rule call.
Kim Collier.
Here.
Craig Koochaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fullenkamp.
Here.
Wiley Clerk.
Here. You all emailed a copy of our minutes from our March 15th meeting. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose the same. All right, our first thing tonight is a public hearing that we need to have concerning the vacation of an alley over here on the Macklin property. So, to do that public hearing, I have, I need a motion to close the city council, no?
Suspend.
Suspend the city council meeting.
You can close if you want.
I make a motion to suspend the city council meeting.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Okay, we are now, we've now suspended the council meeting and we are now in a public hearing concerning the vacation of this alley over on the Macklin property over here. Is there any discussion from the public or anyone else in reference to this alley? Tim?
I will note that this was part of the consideration that was agreed to by the city in obtaining the Macklin easements for the First Street Sewer Project. This particular alley runs between First Street and the river, so it runs kind of east-west direction. We have no city utilities in the alleyway itself. It's a platted but undeveloped alley. There are no city utilities, no public utilities in the alley. There's no use for this. There's no intended or future use based on discussions with various department heads. So, the request has been made by the Macklin family that the alley be vacated. The effect of that would be that the, if it's vacated, the south half of the alley would revert to the property immediately adjacent to the south and the north half immediately adjacent to the north. It happens that the Macklin family owns on both sides of this, so it would revert to them in its entirety. So, that's the matter that's before the council. And in order to vacate an alley, there must be first a public hearing held to allow the public to weigh in on whether there would be any adverse impact to surrounding owners. And, so if there's no public comment with regard to this particular matter, you can move to close the public hearing and then also go back into your regular meeting.
We have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
And a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Okay, our public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion to open back up the council meeting?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Now we're back in our city council meeting.
We do make the publication of a matter of record for this very public hearing.
I got a matter of record?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Okay. So next thing we will have would be the ordinance for that.
Do we have a second public hearing advertised for?
Dolco.
Dolco?
Yes, yes.
Is it, what time was it? Was it also?
At the same time.
Okay, so we probably should go ahead and suspend the minutes or suspend the meeting and go into the second public hearing later.
Do I have a motion to suspend the city council meeting again so we can have another public hearing?
I'll make that motion to suspend.
Second. A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? I'm waiting. Am I supposed to make a motion? Do I have a motion to open a public hearing? Which we didn't do the last time.
So moved.
It's a combined motion.
Yeah, combined motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Now we're back in our public hearing concerning the tax abatement for Dolco Packaging. Mr. Schurger and Mr. Meyer and help me, Mr.?
Bob Garner.
Bob Garner came at our last meeting, stated their case for their abatement. This is all a matter of procedure, having the public hearing.
I'm really bored you by repeating it, so if there's any questions, this will be the time for that.
Yes.
And I'll sit down.
Do council or anyone from the public have any questions concerning the abatement scenario for Dolco? At our last meeting, we read a resolution which actually asked for seven years tax abatement. And we passed that and now this evening after this public hearing, we can either approve that resolution or we can amend that resolution or we can deny it. And that's where we're at as far as with the resolution. If there's any other comments for the public hearing?
Dolco's proposal made front page news. Thank you, Bob, for covering the story and I had.
Bob wasn't here.
We all were.
The paper.
Yes, thank you, your paper.
Only comments I'd received from the public were all positive. Glad to see Dolco expanding, so that's all I'll add.
Comments that they didn't realize to the extent of what that business does and what it brings to Decatur.
I've been telling everybody I know that they make one quarter of all egg cartons here in Indiana, Decatur.
Should have been billboard that says that.
I think they just found a new slope.
That's all. Okay. Any more questions? No other comments? Will I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
Yep. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Now I could use a motion to reopen the council meeting.
I'll make that motion to open the council meeting.
Second. Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're back in session. Here we are.
Yeah. Phyllis needs to make a matter of record, the proof of publication, the statement of benefits.
Yeah, there's the, now the public hearing that needs to be made a matter of record in approving that all the entities got this information about the tax abatement.
Motion to approve that?
So moved.
Got a matter of record?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Okay, so now we get down to the actual discussion of the resolution. As I said, you came to us two weeks ago, three weeks ago, requesting a seven-year abatement. Council's had an opportunity to consider that. We stated at our last meeting that five years has been somewhat the norm, however, after looking into that, there have been exceptions, okay? You are bringing approximately 20 jobs and a fair amount of revenue brought into the tax base, so council discussion? Anyone opposed to the seven-year abatement? If not, I am looking for a motion to pass resolution.
Or introduce.
To introduce Resolution 2016 dash, is this?
You're going to do the short reading?
We're tied along.
I'm just going to get to that this.
Yes.
Four.
Please.
Confirming Resolution Number 2016 dash, 16 dash 4 by short title only.
Thank you.
Save us all some time, right?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Tim?
Confirming Resolution Number 2016 dash 4, City Council of City of Decatur, Indiana, confirming resolution for the designation of an economic revitalization area upon the application of Technoplex Inc., DBA Dolco Packaging.
So I guess we're looking for a motion to pass Resolution 2016 dash 4?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Have a motion and a second to pass Resolution 2016 dash 4. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Thank you, gentlemen. Moving right along. Alley? Alley? Yes.
Phyllis, do you have the statement of benefits? The closing of, if we made that a matter of record?
Which alley? The one between Madison?
Well, Ken and I will need to complete showing.
Okay. All right, then we, okay, that's fine.
Okay, so we need to go back to the alleyway over here on First Street and have to get, make a, is there a resolution for that or what is there? Ordinance?
An ordinance.
Ordinance, yeah. For the vacation of the alley. What's the number on that?
Tim, do we need to do a petition also? For the Macklin? You don't need to do anything with that?
No, that's just, that initiates to the.
So, there's Ken. Why can't I?
One? Really? Okay, so now we're back to the alley and we have an ordinance which is number 2016 dash one. And if I could have a motion to introduce?
Introduce.
On its first reading?
By short title.
By short title, thank you.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same?
Ordinance Number 2016 dash one, short title, an ordinance vacating an alley at Platte Public Way in the City of Decatur, Indiana.
Make a motion to pass the ordinance by reading, or sorry.
2016 dash one.
16 dash one by short title.
A motion, pass the ordinance 2016 dash one by short title. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same?
Motion to introduce it.
Can I get a motion?
Second reading.
Orders 2016 dash one by short title for its second reading.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second to introduce ordinance 2016 dash one for its second reading by short title only. Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same?
Ordinance Number 2016 dash one, short title, an ordinance vacating an alley at Platte Public Way in the City of Decatur, Indiana.
Do I have a motion to pass ordinance 2016?
I'll make that motion.
On a second reading, thank you. And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same?
I'll just.
Oh yeah, we missed that. We'll get that on the second one, yeah. Oppose the same? Have a roll call vote.
Kim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Koochaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fullenkamp.
Yes.
Wiley Clerk.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, do we want to either table it, move to table the ordinance for third and final reading next meeting or you can suspend the rules and act on it on?
Make a motion to suspend the rules and.
Place ordinance 2016.
Third, final reading, short title.
I'll second that motion.
A motion, place ordinance 2016 dash one in its third reading by short title only, suspending the normal rules. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Tim?
Ordinance Number 2016 dash one, short title, an ordinance vacating an alley at Platte Public Way in the City of Decatur, Indiana.
And do I have a motion for passage of ordinance 2016 dash one?
I'll make that motion.
Second. A motion and a second, we'll have a roll call vote.
Kim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Koochaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fullenkamp.
Yes. Ordinance 2016 dash one is passed. Next will be a nice little presentation of something that I'm pretty excited about if Melissa and Aaron and Jeremy would want to come forward. Try to preface this. When I took office, Jeremy came in and saw me and says, hey, Ken, we're working on something I think is going to be pretty cool. In the past, anytime someone from the city had an issue, they would call City Hall or they'd call the mayor or they would call one of the department heads. They'd call someone, say, I got a problem, I got a pothole out front of my house or whatever. And a sticky note would get written. And a sticky note would get passed to someone and then from there it might get passed on to someone else. Ultimately, we hope that that, that the complaint would get settled. It might be a pothole, it might be whatever, a dead animal out in the street, but seems that in the past, whenever there was a, can council members see the screen? That one you might turn a little bit. Whenever there was an issue, it was just called in and hopefully the message got back to the department that needed to resolve the issue. Jeremy says, well, hey, we, we're looking at something. Initially, what we were looking at was going to cost quite a bit of money. And then, Jeremy, don't you just explain to me how you happened to stumble across this?
Well, actually, we're back up a little bit further. Through all the conferences and stuff I go through, through the state of Indiana, there's what's called the LTAP group, it's called the Technical Assistance Program. And basically what that does is if you're having trouble with some different areas, you need additional training, this group offers that training for free. Through all the different conferences I've went to and talked about that, about a reporting software, asset management complaint, you know, software, so on and so forth. And you were getting different variables of, different degrees of programs every day. Obviously, they all come with price. There was $6,000 in general, they have $25,000 here, this to maintain a program like this. So, I spent about two years kind of kicking it around, kind of kicking different ideas around. Aaron has come aboard the last couple of years as my administrative assistant, helping me with different programs. And it's something that Aaron and I both identified as a need for the city. Former Mayor Schultz also worked off with Aaron a little bit. We were pretty much ready to make a trip to Whiting, Indiana, to look at a program and make out. Between Aaron and John, they did a lot of investigating of what they felt and what I felt was, should be involved in something like this. In short, through a conversation with Aaron, we brought Ethan Snyder in. Ethan is a GIS person that we share with Adams County. Showed it to him and says, Ethan, you know, what do you think about something like this? You know, give us some guidance. Can you build something to make this work? Ethan's like, yeah, you know, I saw this someplace, I'm just not sure, you know, but I'll look at it. Ethan stopped at a restaurant, got a sandwich, went back to the service complex, pulled it up on the county GIS. It was already on the county's GIS that we're already paying, you know, and involved with the county. So basically what we did, or what Ethan and Aaron did, they went through and they changed different things with the pictures and so on and so forth. What we're getting ready to show you is a reporting software, it's called, let me look on it, Citizen Reporter.
Citizen Reporting System.
Citizen Reporting System. We've used this since February the first, just internally. It's all work orders. If it's something that we get a call on or something that I know that needs done, I get my phone out, I put it in a system, it goes through Aaron's computer, and then we have a workstation in our shop that, there's a computer there and then a plasma TV hanging on the wall that identifies street, utilities, trash, parks. So when that pulls up, and you see some different examples as we go, when that pulls up, it gives different colored dots on that screen. So when the guys walk in in the morning, if the utility guys are walking in, they say blue dots, they know that there's something there. They can go over and click on that blue dot if I'm not there or Bill's not there or Dan's not around, they can click on that blue dot. We went a little bit further with this, though. Depending on the outcome of this meeting, probably more like the first and next week, we're going to launch this to the public. What it will be is the public will be able to go on our website, click on this problem and report it. And it will actually pull up if you see a pothole or you see a non-emergency problem. Now, we don't want, you can, you can call in or put in the water leaks and stuff like this, but we would prefer if it's a, if it's a water main break or something more serious, that you still call, you know, the Sheriff's Department or City Hall to let us know because those are emergency situations, which we talked about in the department head meeting that we're going to put a little bit of clarity on, you know, what is an emergency and what number you need to call. But I'm going to cut my part a little short and let Aaron kind of go through the actual, what you need to do to report. But the, a lot of this is, we will be able to do a, basically a survey, either monthly or quarterly or at the end of the year. The mayor's always sent out, hey, you know, it's December, send me your end of the year, what you've accomplished this year. By, with this, we can just pull up how many work orders we had this year, whether the street had X amount or water had X amount or parks had X amount. But also, also going further, if we've been on Elm Street for water leaks, if we've been on, you know, Homestead for water leaks, we can actually pull up Homestead Edition or wherever. And it will give us a whole survey of where we were in that addition or that street, what the dates were, what the problem was, so on and so forth. And it helps to give a better explanation of where some of your problem areas are. Gets away from the sticky notes, gets away from the 1970s and 80s way of some of that. One last point I will make is, and I talked about this this morning, is right before Christmas, we're getting very close, we were figuring out where we needed to be, what we wanted to do. I was at home, it was on Saturday night, we were getting ready to go to Christmas, our family Christmas, the girls were watching PBS, in and out of PBS changing, you know, different times and different shows. I happened to walk back downstairs and it caught my eye, there was, there was a guy on TV that was talking about a very similar program. It was American Boston. Boston had just recently went through the same thing. They were doing sticky notes. They were doing, you know, hey, you know, Kim, could you fix this pothole? You know, Kim would pass it off to Craig, Craig would pass it off to Tim, so on and so forth. So there was no really tracking of who was assigned what job. He made a lot of very valid points. I actually called Aaron that night and I said, hey, you know, while this is still on, you know, she hooked it on and she took a lot of those points. You're going to see more of this and you're going to see the importance that she has there, of how valuable it's going to be to us.
What you've described too should help seeing trends. Certain failures happen at a particular location numerous times, you begin to more easily see that trending.
Yes, one day I and I come in and say, hey, we need to replace the water main on the street because we know we've been here twelve times. Well, we can go back and say, you know, we've had twelve plants that make $400 a week. And, oh man, we had this and that and so on and so forth. And it helps prioritize where you need to be, where you need to be spending some of your capital improvement on this.
That was great.
So, go ahead.
It also helps to tag on to that, it also helps if a resident were to call and ask, hey, I called two months ago and with this issue, I don't know who I talked to, that type of thing.
Can you hear Aaron in the back? Is the mic on? Can you hear? Okay. Sorry, Aaron, go ahead. I just wanted to make sure the mic was loud enough.
I'm pretty loud, so I don't think they probably have me, probably hearing me. It's a database for all of our issues, so we can pull up that information, we can do a search and say, oh yeah, you called in on such and such date, we took care of that on this date, you know, do you need anything further, anything like that? Before we're like, no, I think I remember you calling. You know, I mean, there just wasn't any way to really track that, so that's also a plus with this system. If you have any questions, I've done this for a couple of months now, so I go through it pretty fast, just give me a timeout and please ask any questions, okay?
Yep. I gotta wait.
All right. There will be a link on our website and also on Facebook that a citizen can click on this and this is the screen that will come up on their computer or their smartphones. This is also an app for your smartphone, so if you go to this link, you pull up, it's also an app as well. So I'm just going to go through this. A citizen will proceed as a guest where they can sign in. The sign in information, it will keep their information, it'll keep their name, it'll keep their email, that type of thing. My guests is a lot of people will just sign in as guests. Who wants to rumor another password?
Good point.
So you just click on proceed as guest and this screen will come up. If you look over here on the right-hand side, there's code enforcement, park for trees, street, trash, utilities. Those are the categories of issues that the individual can choose from. I'm just going to go in the street and add a pothole, if you will. So you just click on the street and you add submit a report. At this point, you'll just click on the down arrow and you can choose from these different items. If these items aren't on there, they can always choose other and in the details, they can be more descriptive of what the issue is. So we'll click on pothole and I'll just put.
Giraffe.
They were very creative today, the department head meeting, I won't elaborate, let's just leave it at that.
Got a dead giraffe in the street.
Yeah, we're going to put dead giraffe. I hope they love your story.
Right, I'm going to put a test on here because I don't want to send the guy who searched this tomorrow. Okay, I will put in my name. Whoops, sorry, I might use this keyboard. Name and phone are not required, but we do have email required and that's mostly for contact information. If we get this and we need more information on this, we can email the individual and say, hey, we need some clarity or please call this number and let us know exactly what you're talking about. Phone number I'm not going to put in, I will just put email, let's see. I won't use my real email, I don't want Bob emailing me later. Okay, it automatically puts in the date, address, let's see, 172. And you just arrow down. And at this point, you see it says browse. If someone had an issue or they're out and they see a pothole, they can literally take a picture of that pothole and they can then add an attachment. If they see a damn sign or whatever the issue is, they literally can take a picture of that and at this point, put that attachment on this. So, we can see specifically what the issue is if they choose to do that. They don't have to, but obviously that would be very helpful. The location is, will actually put this job on the map, if you will. I typed it in only because I'm at the computer, but again, if someone is taking that picture and they download that picture, if they have their phone, they're at that location, they can just hit their location and the phone recognizes that and it's automatically, you have your, your location right there and then, so.
What we would like to do at some point, and it doesn't sound like the GIS is capable until it's time to upgrade again, is once we complete or could complete, that it would automatically send that person an email back saying that your request has been completed. We do not have that capability at this point, but I'm hopeful at some point that, you know, you would get a response, so you know that, you know, we did look into your, your issue and that one's completed.
Okay, and if you see here, I pull up the GeoCoder and I just click on my address and if you scroll down, there's your map address. And if you don't know, that's City Hall, so there it is. That's it. You hit report it and it thinks you, your report is submitted.
And that goes on, that automatically goes on the monitor down the street road?
Yeah. It'll come to me first and I will review them to make sure all the information's in there. Once I receive it, it goes right to the shop.
So you're, you're kind of like validating that this is a legitimate work order? Not a giraffe in the street, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't, I mean, it would just get frustrating. Yeah, we don't, I mean, it would just get frustrating for everybody if they, there's stuff on there, it just doesn't make sense or, so I'm going to validate it.
There was a dead possum on Eastern Road extended a couple nights.
Yeah, I'll have that.
So you should stop and take a picture of that.
So far it's been very useful, even after the rain. Because with the rainy days and stuff, the guys can just go back through the list and see what's on there, see what's there and pick out different things that, you know, why did this came in yesterday? There may be stuff that's older, but they can complete it that day during the rain. So it keeps the guys busier.
Do you, when you validate it, do you prioritize it?
It's in order by date.
By outcomes, yeah. But then I'd look at it two to three times a day, just to look at it to see if there's something that has went on there that is more of a priority than, you know, a pothole or a damaged sign or something, you know, if you have a sinkhole, obviously that's more of a priority than, you know, something minor. So, the guys seem to like it, they're using it. I think we've come a long ways with this.
And this is just for your information, this is what the guys see on their end end at this computer. They have actually a screen that shows all the different jobs, but then they go, this is the screen they see, that they can, once they get that particular recorder done, they go into the screen and they complete it and then it's off their screen.
Okay, see if you see 1420, you want to start scrolling over here, when you stop, when you come to status, if you go to the dropdown, that's what the guys would do, you know. We, it would show where it's been submitted, once Erin goes through it, validates it, she puts received on it. And as the guys go through here every day, once it's completed, they can physically actually go on there, pull a dropdown, down, hit completed, and it takes it off the screen, takes the dot on. Once it does that, then it's automatically, it goes back into the database that it's a completed work order. So we have come on a little further. You know, type of problem, you know, it would be identified with whatever they click, you know, whether it was a sewer issue or...
Cracked split storm drain lid.
The details would be whatever they call it that day. Go on Erin. When you get to notes, that's our portion, that if we went out and looked at it, we've had to wear parts or we're waiting on locates, you know, or whatever. We like to put the notes in because we get a lot of follow-up calls. Hey, I called on Monday, you know, have you guys had an opportunity to go out and look at that? You know, if I'm not there and Erin's there, Erin can just pull it up, see if it was looked at, you know, Friday, the parts should be here, you know, we should be out there by Monday or Tuesday, the following week. So it's just more of a faster way of completing some of these tasks, more organized, more accountable.
Yeah.
That one there was, that just happened today, right? That was called City Hall?
Yes, right.
And the girls put it in upfront. And the nice thing about that for us is, we get calls like this all the time and usually the girls or I will call Jeremy and if he's in a meeting or something and doesn't answer, I forget and if it gets thrown aside...
Goes to that sticky note.
Or I call Jeremy, he's driving around and forgets and he gets back, you know, this, it's in the system, as soon as we put it in there.
You know, and, okay, you have an help tablet on your desk, you know, you write all this stuff down and papers get drawn on top of it, so on and so forth. That come up numerous times over the years and, you know, they handed me a stack of them that's been on their desk for a while. You know, this link just automatically goes on there. If I'm not available to look at it right away, there's assistants and there's other workers that can hold up and look at it quick and say, you know, this looks serious, we need to go look at it. You know, you get calls from insurance companies on bent wheels and potholes and just sidewalks and stuff like that. This makes us accountable for that. So we're getting calls and complaints, it's going in here. So we know and they know that we've had calls or we have not had calls. So it's very worthwhile. The city of Lockville is over and looked at it. Couple of other cities have been around since we've talked about, since I've been at other conferences. So it's going to be more of a popular thing with what the lot of communities going forward.
And this is just a screenshot of our website, this is what it will look like on our website and the individuals can click on either this icon or this icon, but this will be the icon representing the citizen reporting system.
Any questions by council or the public on this? Or Bob?
Ethan, we're trying Ethan Snyder in there. Yeah, that's good. I think it's excellent. It's a good tool for council because, you know, Craig, you're some person, somebody says, hey Craig, you know, I saw this, you know, and you don't have to remember to call me, or text me or whatever.
Grab over to that, to that site?
You know, and take a picture of it if you want to click or, a lot of it's going to be educated, but with this is out there.
And I've called Jeremy once a month for the last 10 years. Is this your issue or whose issue is it? You know, and it just, it's an easier facilitation. Today in our department head meeting, Greg Cook jumped in and said, wow, this is something great, our, the second, third shift police officers are out on the beat at night, they come across problems, bam, they can report it, you know. So it's, it's not only something that the citizens can use, but also as police, fire, anybody, employees, council members come across it can utilize it. Pastor Becker?
I like the idea of being able to send something like one weekend or after hours.
Mm-hmm, right, yep. 24/7 you can report a problem. Non-emergency problem.
Jeremy, that little link, like you had those updates you click on, you could put that as an app on your phone and you just, it would take you right there or not?
We can't actually, we're not going to actually do an app, I mean, but you can put like a shortcut or something on your phone, every phone is different.
To take you to the...
But you can, yeah, and you can just click on that and it'll, it'll go right to this screen right here.
It actually does a little app on your phone.
Right, right.
Just like now, if I go to Google, I just type indicator, start typing indicator and automatically comes up, Decatur Problem Reporter. And it takes you right there. And it takes you right to it, you know, it just goes away. Otherwise you have to access...
So these guys, I know.
Well, CAF is just a, one technical assistance program, they help you when you have some decisions. They gave us some direction, they gave us some ideas on how to handle that. We went a totally different direction than what they would want us to do.
That's cool. Yeah.
So, I'm very thankful that Ethan and Erin did work on this, they worked very hard. They probably had off and on for a couple months, you know, getting everything dialed in, making sure that they were satisfied. It's just like everything a lot easier.
I don't believe we're still talking.
Thank you, Erin, thank you Ethan Snyder, Jeremy, former Mayor Schultz for his insight to task you with this.
You're welcome.
Yes, and once again, these are non-emergency problems. So, thank you, Erin.
Yeah, thank you.
There's some people here that would probably like to keep things moving. First, let's go with some events that we need to approve. I have one already here, it's for, I guess, do you pronounce it Ed's or is it E-D-Z? Ed's, Harley Davidson Motorcycle Service and Repair, Shannon Reinhardt, he's done this a few other times. He's, he's going to have an event on April 28th from 5:30 until 8:00 PM. Approximately number of people expected, 100 or so. And he would like to close First Street between Monroe and Jackson during that time period from between 5:30 and 8:00. He's done this several times before for various events, never any problems at all. It's already been submitted to the Police Department, Fire Department, Street Department, Jeremy, Greg and Les have all signed off on it. I just need to have this approved through council. Need a motion to approve this event?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same?
Aye.
Taken care of, thank you. The other one, we have Ray and Teresa Babel here tonight representing Abate.
Do I need to go there somewhere?
Yeah, oh yeah. We have had the mayor's motorcycle ride wind up in Decatur, how many times? Three or four?
Three.
Three times?
Yeah.
And they would like to do that, do so again this year and they're here to get our blessings on that, so.
Actually, everybody wants to have a hair every year, they keep that one, we just make it a standing thing they say, but we'll see. But yeah, everybody would like to come back this year. Nothing really is going to be any different except for food vendors and activities. The Fort Wayne Police Department, Marty Bender will escort, will escort because we start out in Fort Wayne and I pay for permits and stuff up there for, to use the roads and stuff. He does it all because I don't know what all they have to do for it, so I pay money and he takes care of it. And then he'll contact the Police Department here and the Sheriff's Department and then I'll talk to all of them too. I haven't had a chance to get around and talk to everybody yet, but we still would like to come in Adams Street like we normally do, come at five points and then come, have second blocked off from Adams to Jackson, is it? Yes. Adams to Jackson and then have Court Street, Madison and Jefferson also blocked off. We would leave the street about 8:00 and we'll start setting up about 8:00 in the morning to 6:00 at night.
What's the date?
June the 5th, it's on Sunday and it's not graduation weekend.
There we go.
So that, you know, that's a good thing. We're going to need the courthouse for the electricity and stuff. We're going to rent the porta potties from Schnett and we cover the cost of those. We also pay a organization usually with the kids, last year, the last time we were here, it was the Boy Scout, we pay them $400 to come and clean up at the end of the event or during, kind of during. The thing that I would need from Parks and Rec is trash cans like we've gotten before and the streets to block off, the barricades and stuff. And we always make sure that it's cleaned up when we leave, so.
Have we ever had police reserves or county reserves presence or anything in the past?
Usually the city, city usually has cops there, but we, I mean, we've never had any, you know, the Fort Wayne, when they come through, they don't stay very, they don't stay very long. Marty usually, he just goes right through and he goes on home and sometimes the sheriff's guys, because one of the things that I do, that we do is we feed the guys, because they're doing that on their free time, the volunteers out of Fort Wayne and the State Police, so we always feed them. So some of them stay around and for a while and eat and kind of check things out.
Okay.
So I haven't been around to get everybody's signatures, so.
Well, we got Greg, Les and Jeremy are the three people that need to sign off on it. Are you all good with it?
Yep. It's only been this, this program.
Yep, yep, it has been.
Very well organized, very well ran, yep.
Okay.
Really brings a lot of people to the scene.
Yes, we're, we're...
Sure does, yeah. Make a motion approve once again. You got a motion in two seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.
If you'd want to have the three guys sign that while you're here. Okay, thank you. Chad, patiently waiting back there.
Melissa, you going to help him out or something? We got to pass papers.
Okay. It's farmer's market time again.
Yes, it is. With the water relocation project going on, we're going to move the market off of the First Street parking lot and with council approval, go back onto Madison Street between First and Second. I've been in contact with Community Foundation and Prestige, they'll both work with us with parking issues. I would need permission to close the road between 2:00 and 7:00 on Thursday, starting the 19th of the week.
Of?
Of May till the 20th of October. That's just a copy of our forms, rough side map, Thursday, Thursday's day.
May 19th, October 12th.
This is a brief guideline of the, of our, outline of our guidelines. The committee compromised this year and we're going to allow vehicles to be parked with their boots. The only stipulation is that they cannot leave, so there's no safety issues of cars moving in the parking lot or in the roadway. If they choose to have their vehicles with them, they have to stay until closing. If they leave, it has to be an emergency, if it's not, they will not be invited back. The participants and all the fees that they've paid us to that point will be forfeited. Just because it is a safety issue, we don't want cars driving around during market time.
Pretty well organized here, Chad, to me.
No, I got a good committee that works with that.
Farmers Market's always been a big hit with everyone, you know, through the summer and, spring, summer and early fall. And unless council has any objections, I'd look for a motion to...
I have a couple of questions.
Questions, go ahead.
So, on, on this one item, it says food trailers and non-food related vendor, is that talking about food trucks?
Food trucks and stuff.
So, I'm not sure I understand what they're saying.
We're trying to promote Andys, so we would not want anybody, you know, no food trailers or food trucks coming in, unless they ask the committee first, you know, we just don't want a food truck showing up and going, hey, we're going to sell tonight. No, that's not what we're, we're looking for.
Okay, so you, you would allow it if they make arrangements?
Yeah, if they made arrangements and came to us and the committee as a whole voted, yeah.
Okay. I guess, and my second question, I'm not, you talk about the committee, I'm not clear who is really responsible for Farmer's Market because it's been back and forth different places.
The committee consists of the City of Decatur, Chamber of Commerce, Parks and Rec, the Main Street Organization through absorption of the Decatur Small Business Association was the sponsor, Purdue Extension and Tri-Cat, is all who's on...
So those are the responsible groups?
Yes.
Okay. I guess, being a part of Main Street, I wasn't sure that was clear.
Right. Now, Main Street came on through the absorption of the Decatur Small Business Association. They were one of the sponsors and then when they absorbed, when Decatur, or when Main Street kind of fell into the small business and it went away, Main Street took over as one rep. Max Miller represents Main Street on the committee.
Okay. Any other questions?
Motion move forward?
Say it. Have a motion in a second?
Just one correction. They don't have that yet, but, I don't know, you got a work in progress right now?
Shall not be allowed.
Okay, yeah.
Yep. Have a motion in a second to allow Farmer's Market to take place on Thursday evenings on Madison Street between First and Second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Les, Greg, you guys are both good with this, right? Yeah.
Other than...
Other than that wording.
I'll give a look on that, on that, but...
Okay, I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Thank you, Chad.
Thank you. Thank you, Chad. Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I need to, who do I ask about the...
I need to, who do I ask about the commissioner thing? I don't, not sure who that is.
Commissioner.
It says downtown activities for the, as coming commissioners.
Okay, that's to get access to the electrical and whatever?
That's the county commissioners.
Oh, yeah, county commissioners.
Right, that's, that's...
I'm sorry, I don't, you?
No, no, it's not us.
Oh, okay, so.
It's county. They're county officials. Doug Lawman, Kim Fricki and Rex Moore.
If you, call me, I'm going, he's at 10, I think. If you call, hold, Mary Beery, she's the auditor.
Oh, the auditor.
She'll, she'll take care of it.
She'll get on the agenda.
Thank you.
Phyllis has a matter of record, uh, in reference to the redevelopment commission, right?
No, it's required by law that I have to, but the mayor and the council members know the activities of the redevelopment commission. Um, the city hasn't really received any TIP dollars yet, so we haven't really spent anything. We did borrow some money from the city to pay for some bills, like the bonds, because every commissioner has to be bonded. Um, other than that, it's just list all the members and we have all the TIP parcels listed in my office if anyone has any, wants to see them. I just need to make this matter of record that you guys did receive this report.
So moved.
I have it in your file.
Have a motion in a second to make this a matter of record. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Thank you, Phyllis. Um, Jim and Les, uh, Jim came in, saw me, I think it was Monday of this week, showed me a check that he got from our local merchant Walmart for...
Melissa and Walmart, we got it in the paper tonight.
Yep.
Received $2,500.
Just kind of want to publicly thank Walmart for...
Only for smoke detectors.
Yep, they approached Jim and said, hey Jim, you need to put in for this grant. And Jim got with Melissa, she put in for the grant and in a very quick turnaround, Jim received a check for $2,500 to go toward smoke detectors, detectors for homes in the area. So, thank you Walmart for your, uh, support of this.
You do mention that this is an ongoing...
Yep.
Campaign, um, for people that, that need them or want to replace them is, you know, come and see us. It's not based on in town or any other criteria other than a need.
Anyone needing smoke detectors in their house. If you have smoke detectors, but they're old or, uh, old fashioned, whatever, and you want them replaced, and all you need to do is call the, what is the phone number they would call?
Our administrative, uh, 748-909.
8909, for Bob's sake there.
Yeah, you're going to get away.
And, uh, they just simply said, we need smoke detectors in our house, or we need to update our smoke detectors. You'll go out, evaluate the homes, see how many they need and put them up.
And we do put them in, that's one, one of our criterias. We do totally follow them.
Yep, great service. Great service. Thank you. Okay, that's that? Yes, sir. Every 10 years, it's recommended to change your detectors.
What happens if they're harmed or...
Okay. I was going to acknowledge, uh, Mary Byer, but she had to leave tonight for some reason. Must had another meeting publicly. If you, anybody here would like to take notice of the art that's out there, it's, uh, it's wooden carvings that come from Haiti, and there's some pretty impressive looking pieces out there. So, I was going to thank her for that, maybe have her elaborate on it, we can do that next meeting, so. Last thing on the agenda, unless someone has something, is something I regret to have to read to everyone this evening. It's a letter that I received, uh, two days ago, April, I actually stated yesterday. It says, can I regret to inform you that I am tendering my resignation as the city engineer of Decatur, Indiana, effective at the end of the day, April 18th. This provides the city with a two-week period from this notice. I've made this decision after much thoughtful consideration. I am not unhappy with the city, nor do I wish the city ill, with city ill. I am proud to have represented the city in my role here and would have done it all over again. I will do what I can to aid in the transition of my responsibilities as well as outlining my current projects within the city. Thank you and God bless Nate Rumschlag. Nate's been our city engineer for a little over four years, I believe, is that right, Nate?
Just short of four.
Just short of four years, okay. And, uh, again, that was, uh, one of Mayor Schultz's visions to hire a city engineer, and I think to a T, everyone on council would agree that it's, uh, been a good investment for the city to have an engineer on staff. Uh, whenever we run into a sewage problem, a utility problem, water line problem, whatever we've always had in the past, before we had a city engineer, had to rely on contacting an engineering firm to, to give us a ruling or instructions on how to handle these things, and having an engineer on staff is, uh, more than paid for itself. So, we regretfully will have to say goodbye to Nate here in a couple of weeks. Long term, the city will have to look at the possibility of continuing utilizing a city engineer, and, uh, that's something we'll discuss soon. So, we may have to have an executive session to, to have that discussion, I'm not sure. So, Nate, thank you very much for your service. We're going to miss you and, uh, we'll probably be calling you from time to time with a question here and there.
I appreciate it and, uh, thank you all for your support. Talking with many of you, uh, committee and look forward to hearing from you. I wish everybody the best, that they've been a good model for what this position can do for the city.
Any comments from council? Okay, thank you, Nate. Um, I will have included that as my mayor's report this evening. Any comments from department heads? Roger?
John's like, on that, he's been at Land Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals and just have this, probably, there's been a huge help.
Yep.
For their education and...
In addition to the utility work that he's done, uh, the city built or redesigned this facility, and Nate oversaw the contractor that did this. He oversaw the contractor and, that did our police station. So, yeah, he's been more than just a utility civil engineer for us. He's got us through a lot of projects. Thank you, Roger. Anything else, Roger?
No.
Greg?
Only the same, um, Melissa.
Les?
Mike, that one's also.
Jim?
Good luck.
Jeremy?
Good luck.
Mr. Carbo?
Well, I think we're all missing, that, that, and like you said, it was kind of John's idea that we needed a stormwater person and to combine both the efforts and Nate has done an outstanding job and he, you know, yeah, we're missing Nate. They all will difficult to replace.
I'll skip Nate. Dan?
She definitely, everything, I'm definitely going to miss him. She definitely helped us in a lot of projects we've had lately. Definitely wishing him luck.
And the person that's probably going to miss him the most, Ann?
Yeah, he, um, was key to getting us to the point of letting bid for the First Street CSO project. We couldn't made it under, hopefully under that, it's what we did without Nate.
Melissa?
No, thank you, Nate.
Aaron, you have anything else? Okay, Nate, you have any other comments?
Please pull over and move.
Yep. Um, comments from council, have council members have anything they want to bring up this evening?
Just want to make sure that you found your replacement.
Yeah.
Yeah, man, that'd be good.
That'd be good.
But you can't leave, can we, can we, you can't really restrict him from leaving, can we?
Try that.
Yeah, I just want to say thanks to Nate too. Uh, you know, I've had the opportunity to work on a lot of different projects, and one in particular was, uh, the, uh, ongoing negotiations with the Regional Sewer District, of which Nate ended up serving on the board when John, uh, got out of that position, but he was very helpful in, in that process as well as, along with all the other projects that have been mentioned, so. Uh, he added, uh, a great deal of wealth and a pair of eyes that we sorely needed on a lot of different projects in a lot of different areas, so thanks, Nate.
Anything else? Phyllis, you have anything else?
Um, Nate and I already had our talk, so I told him how disappointed I am to see him leave, so, um, I do need to make a couple more things matter of record. Um, the CSO community notification that Ann has to publish yearly, that has been published, so just need to make that a matter of record.
Motion, have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? It's a matter of record.
The other thing is, um, House Enrolled Act 1264 was passed beginning July 1st. The state is requiring all Indiana, uh, cities and towns to adopt a minimum level of internal controls developed by the State Board of Accounts or risk not having our budgets approved. Uh, so first, council must ensure that internal control standards and procedures are adopted by ordinance and all city employees have to be trained. Um, and it's going to be an ongoing process. Uh, training materials and video presentations are on the State Board of Accounts website. Uh, management should document in writing the internal control policies and procedures required for each department, and then you have to evaluate them regularly. And then second, all have to annually certify in writing, um, the minimum internal control standards and procedures that have been adopted and that all personnel have been trained. Um, so, Tim and I will probably work on and ordinance together. They gave us some, a draft to kind of go by, so just wanted to let you guys know that's just one, another...
Just one more thing.
...that's been passed, yes. It has to be done by the end of the year, so.
Anything else? There is one more thing that I'd kind of forgotten about until just here a second ago. The City of Decatur is conducting a survey right now with city residents in regard to the possibility of adding another service to our sanitation department, and that would be curbside recycling. And Melissa, would you please, uh, kind of fill everyone in?
I can. As of this afternoon, we have right at 600 responses to our, our recycling survey, and that survey is still out there for people to take and we encourage them to do so. Um, the face, our Facebook page, there is a link, on the city's website, there's a link. Um, we also have paper copies for anyone who would like to come into City Hall and complete those surveys on paper. And the best way for you to share your comments with the city, your constructive comments, is through completing the survey. So, um, we're still going to have the survey open for a couple of more weeks, so anybody that has any questions about the survey or questions about what we've been talking about, about curbside recycling, we invite you to ask us.
And at the end of that survey, there is a place for comments where people can give their constructive, uh, comments, positive comments, hopefully, and it's all anonymous.
Correct.
So your identity will not be revealed.
I have no idea who's taking the survey unless they indicate who they are in the comment section.
Right. So, yeah, once we have, uh, the survey completed, the results will be tallied and we'll reveal that.
The council and the community and...
And we'll have some decisions to make, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that completes everything I have on my agenda. Uh, Phyllis has something else?
No, I just think though, were we doing, changing the contract or not?
Are we changing?
Melissa said, were we changing JPR's contract or not?
They're just going to approve the claims.
Yeah.
Okay.
You just...
It's really just wording, so it probably could have been done in order of work.
Um, the JPR is working with us to make a claim for the nature preserve. Their original contract had a sentence that we would like to change. Um, that sentence included where the location of where the trailhead would be. Um, in the DNR grant application, we indicated that the trailhead would be in a specific place. Anything that we do stray from that, we would have to amend our application, so we want to make sure that it's clear that the location of the trailhead is correct in that, in the, um, contract with JPR. They've made the change, I've shared that with Phyllis, she has a copy.
You want a motion to make this a matter of record that we...
Yeah, that we did.
Yeah. So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same?
Motion to approve the claims.
Hold on one moment, I do have one other thing. You're, not with you. I didn't, I didn't recognize the public. Are there any comments from the public this evening? Anyone? Now, Craig, take it away.
Motion approve the claims?
Motion approve the claims. Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? We're adjourned.